All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, July 28, 2022, 6:00 PM. I'd like to ask Terry Arnold, pastor from Pentecostal of East Ridge Church, if he'll come forward, provide our invocation and lead us in our pledge for everyone to stand.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight so very thankful to you for your blessings upon us, both individually and as a community. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our representatives here tonight, all of our City Council, and all those that work with them. And Lord, we thank you, Lord, to know that according to the word of God, that the powers that be are here because of you. You place them in these positions, and Lord, we're trusting you tonight to give them the wisdom, the direction that they need. We ask you, God, as they deliberate upon every issue, may the Spirit of the Lord lead their hearts and their minds, and may there be a spirit of peace and community tonight for the glory of God. We give you all the praise in Jesus's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chauncey. Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
City Manager Dorsey.
Here.
City Attorney Litch.
Here.
First item that we have on the agenda is we have a very special proclamation for a very special lady that has had a milestone event, and I would like the Stone family, if they'll come up front. Counsel, if you'd like to come down.
You're front and center. You're the special guest here. It is my honor to present to you a proclamation for an amazing celebration of your 100th birthday. So we, as the City of East Ridge, has put together a proclamation, and I'll read it to you. Whereas on June 21, 2022, Mary Louis Stone celebrated a milestone of 100 birthday. Whereas born in 1922 to William Witt McKinley and Maude Boggan in Whittwoe, Tennessee, Lois later moved to Chattanooga, and whereas Lois worked in the meal industry and later in the food service, working at the legendary SNW Cafeteria on Market Street in Chattanooga. And whereas Lois married Silas Rudolph Russell Stone, a salesman from a meat packing company on September 28, 1956, later having two sons, Davis and Douglas. And whereas shortly after the birth of their second son, the Stone family moved to East Ridge, where Lois continued her work in food service at Edson's Restaurant located in Ringo Road in East Ridge. And whereas after leaving Edson's Restaurant, Lois worked at the food service for Hamilton County School System at East Ridge High School, retiring after both of her sons had graduated. Whereas Lois has been a longtime member of Spring Creek Baptist Church, and whereas Lois loves and enjoys her five grandchildren, four great-grandchildren, and still gives her sons motherly advice. And whereas Lois is blessed to have a loving family that stays with her so she can live at her home. And when asked, she contributes her longevity, where she lovingly answered her family. Now therefore, I, Brian Williams, Mayor, declare June 21, 2022, as Mary Lois Stone Day in East Ridge, Tennessee, and encourage all citizens to honor Lois on this occasion for her 100th birthday and recognize her contribution to the City of East Ridge. Thank you, ma'am.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all.
All right. The next item we have is a consent agenda. Assuming everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes of the July 14, 2022 council meeting, the May 2022 financial report, and the declaration of surplus property. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
A motion to approve by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any corrections or discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. We'll move to the next item, communication to citizens. This is an opportunity for any citizen to come forward, address any questions, concerns, accolades with the council. Citizens will have up to five minutes. We don't have anybody signed in, but if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to come forward, now is your opportunity. Yes, sir.
I'm not a citizen of East Ridge, but I'm the judge. And I just want to say good evening to you. I passed out a piece of paper. There's some been discussion, of course, about regarding the judge and the election. We've sought a lot of input on the validity of what we're doing, and we will continue to do so as written in this statement and as released. Every source that we have questioned so far has validated what you have done. But if at any time, if it comes from the Attorney General, that I cannot hold the office and the city court maintain its jurisdiction, then I will not pursue the election. I will resign, but as long as the opinions to date, again unanimously, say there is no problem, I will continue to do that. You all have, each time it's come before you, you have voted unanimously votes to affirm my initial appointment and to amend the charter so that I could run. And I will continue to do that and hopefully win the election and the ordinance pass. But again, I don't, my career and my advancement would certainly be secondary to the jurisdiction of this court. We don't want that. That's whatever. The court has been here a long time, and it will go on whether I'm the judge or not, but I do want to be the judge because I have, once you appointed me to it, I've enjoyed my time here, the staff, the police officer, everybody's been very appreciative, and you've been supportive. And I want to thank you for that. So, and also I want to invite you, we're having a reception this evening across the street in the, what's it called, Community Center. And so invited you all to be there, and you know, I'll continue to keep you posted. I stay in touch with Mark, and if anything comes into the contrary, then you know, I'll consider it and do what's best for the court because ultimately what's best for the court is what's best for the city. All right.
Thank you, sir.
So thank you. I'm going to go over there and help my wife set up.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing this opinion piece, supporting the...
Yeah, somebody may publish that on their name.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes. So this is the only opportunity a citizen has to come before the council to bring a question or anything to the council. So during the ordinances and resolutions, there'll be no input from the citizens. So now would be the time, if you have, well, I do have a public hearing. Yes. You're talking about for the short term? Yes. So you will have an opportunity there, yes, for the public hearing. I thought you might have been referring to a different resolution. Yes, you'll have an opportunity at that point. Anyone else? All right, I'll see none. Communication, councilman. We'll start on this side. Councilman Cagle.
Yes, sir. Here a while back, I had some complaints about North Smith and McCall. Sunday I had some more complaints while I was sitting up there trying to eat dinner. And I drove down by there, and I see nothing has been done, so I forgot to look, see if it was on the spot patch.
I don't know if it's on the spot patch, but I'll be happy to check. Do you have a copy of it? I didn't bring mine.
But McCall needs...
I brought everything else.
McCall is in bad shape, and South Smith is like a redboard going down through there. Me, North Smith.
I don't see it on the initial list, but I'll check into it with Chris Vaughn and see what we can do.
Anything else, sir? Councilman Hilton.
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Witt.
Nothing.
One of the things I wanted to, I'm going to ask Chief Allenfield to come forward and give us an update. We had a great East Ridge Police Department community meeting on the 21st, and I'd like for Chief Allen to do a little recap of the meeting and their great things that are happening.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. We had a pretty good turnout. We talked about some of the programs that we've started. We did this community meeting because we had tried before and COVID got in the way. So we were talking about our Taking Home Program, our Citizens Police Academy, our ride-along program. That was well received. We had some of our police officers there to talk about what they're seeing and what they're doing. We were giving some crime prevention tips. We got some feedback from the community, and it was a very good event. We, again, you know that I'm retiring, but I feel certain that that will continue as a quarterly event after I leave. Questions?
No. Thank you. It was a great event. The next thing I want to mention is Light Up Tennessee Balloon Glow, Friday through Sunday, August 5th to 7th, from 6:30 to 9:30. At Camp Jordan, there'll be balloons that'll be lit, and they'll do tether rides, and it's going to be awesome in Camp Jordan. So that is from the 5th to the 7th, 6:30 to 9:30. On the 6th, during the day at the arena, River City Corvette Club will be doing a car show, and one of their sponsors that they donate to is the East Ridge Need a Child Fund, and their car show will be... If I can find what I did with it. Here it is. It's from 9 to 3. So $20 entry, if you want to put your car in. They have a 50/50 drawing, but anyone can come and view the cars and see. And it's any, it's open car show, so it's always a great event, great cars. So if you have an opportunity, come out and see those. We have a lot going on in East Ridge Parks and Rec. We've got T-ball, baseball, softball, flag football, cheerleading, soccer, adult softball signups, and most of those all registration ending in August 14th. So interested in any of those, your kids, go to East Ridge Parks and Rec website or their Facebook page, or call 423-710-6100. It's that time of year. Awesome to see the kids out doing sports and activities. I'm then going to ask the city manager, when he gives his report, to give us an update on the multimodal project, a paving update. Mr. Councilman Cagle already asked about some things there where we're trying diligently to get some paving done. It's been neglected for many, many, many years. And then give us an update on North Mac Smith Road, which is going to be the southern entrance into the Red Wheels development. But that's all I have, so I'll pass it off to city manager Dorsey.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll start with the multimodal. They're slowly moving down the, well, the south side of Ringo Road. Depends on how your directions go. Working from, as I said, Kingwood coming towards the Walmart. They've had a few issues with some sewer laterals that they're working through right now, but that is moving forward. They've had some supply chain issues. For instance, it's taking over two weeks to get concrete at this moment, but they are still moving forward with that project. And at the moment, you know, the whole thing's supposed to be done within a year, and they're doing it in those four phases that I mentioned before, and it still seems to be moving on track so far.
And if you'll remind everyone what the benefits of this is, it's storm...
Yeah, the multimodal is not just curbs and sidewalks going down Ringo Road. Over half the cost of this project, over $3 million worth, is for stormwater improvements to start working on being able to better funnel the water, for lack of a better word, from the tunnels back towards Spring Creek. And this is a major section of where this is going to happen. So underneath the sidewalks and things of that nature, you're going to see a stormwater system being put in place to help divert a lot of that stormwater down and funnel it in the proper way down Ringo Road. So that's one of the main purposes of this project. It's not just to have the sidewalks and the curbs and everything else. It'd be nice though, we're going to have a 10-foot sidewalk on the south side, I was getting back to the south side, and a five-foot sidewalk on the north side. And lighting eventually.
Awesome.
Okay. Spot paving. We had a pre-bid meeting earlier this week with some of the interested contractors, going over some of their questions dealing with the spot paving and the bid packet that they had received. The bid should be coming in on that on August 9. At that point, we will review them, and then we will bring it to, we will see how much of that can be done within the city's budget. And then at that point, we will bring it to the council to review and get your all's approval on it. So that is moving forward as well. North Mac Smith, the southern entrance of North Mac Smith, we've had a couple developments that have happened recently on that. We found out that there is actually right-of-way that does extend from the end of where North Mac Smith is now, around to the southern entrance where the gates are for the development, the gateway development over there. So with that, we've had a land acquisition specialist revising the preliminary cost estimates and getting reappraisal estimates for that property. So we're moving forward with all that, and with that being said, we've also tried to get in touch with TDOT, working on that to see about if we're able to get a little bit of an easement where their interstate, their interstate right-of-way is. That could take nine to 12 months. So we don't know if that's going to work or not. We're going to continue moving forward, even if we're not able to get that. We're not going to let that part slow us down. So we're still moving forward with the project at that point. At the next meeting, I plan on asking if the council would entertain a resolution to request the extension of the road project through to the gated entrance, and that you all make the decision of if we want to be able to proceed with that with the council paying for the road, since we do know the right-of-way will be already taken care of. Most of the right-of-way, much to be a couple small right-of-way issues that are still there to look at, but those will hopefully be ironed out, and we'd be able to move forward. Any questions on that? Depending on the tentative agenda for the next meeting.
Yes, sir. One thing that I'll add to that is I think we've had some good response from our utilities, EPB.
Yes, that they're going to pay to move their own.
Yes, that is a big win that we don't have to pay to relocate EPB poles and utilities.
Yes. And the last thing I wanted to inform the council about is we are considering and looking at creating a new position in the city for a person to handle four different assignments. One, dealing with economic development, dealing with community involvement, dealing with grants, the applications and the monitoring of grants, and to help with our social media with the city, to be able to do a better job of communicating with our citizens and being able to move forward with that. The money is currently within the budget to be able to do that, so it's nothing that I have to ask council approval on. But I would like, you know, if you have any input, I would like to talk to me about it in the next couple of days. Just feel free to give me a call, and I'd be happy to talk to each and every one of you about the proposed position that we're looking at doing. With that said, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. All right. We'll move into old business. We have a tabled item that has been tabled to tonight. It's ordinance number 1168.
An ordinance, the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, abandoning portions of three closed right-of-ways as follows. McDonald Road located on lot 6517 and 6521 Ringo Road. Slater Road located on lot 6519, 6521, and 6517 Ringo Road. And an unnamed road located on lots 6519 and 6517 Ringo Road, as detailed on the attached map, subject to certain conditions.
This would be the second final reading. Yes, sir. Sorry.
Members of the council, Mayor, this is, we have, this has been tabled. What was holding it up was just, was preserving the access that you have current or that exists currently between Ringo Road and Slater Road. Slater Road is that road that runs behind the old Shoney's, which is now the Champies, the BB and T and that strip there. And we've gotten an access agreement worked out. We've talked with the attorneys, and everyone's in agreement. And I would recommend approval. That access agreement just simply provides that all parties that would be the, what I'm calling the Wally's property, and then the hotel behind it, it's actually the hotel's private property, but he has agreed that he will always keep it unobstructed and that access is always preserved in perpetuity. No, there's no maintenance requirements or anything of that nature. He just has agreed that, yes, he will keep that open, which, digging in, we think that, I mean, that's a good thing anyway, but we think they'd have to, but this is sort of a belt and suspenders approach now, so we feel good about it. So the recommendation would be to move forward and approve it.
Thank you, sir. So would the recommendation to, for a motion to approve would be to have the amendment for that agreement included, or is that necessary?
Well, what we'll have is approval of this, and at the next meeting, we can have the actual agreement. It's, they've signed it. I mean, they're all in agreement of it. We can go forward with the abandonment and have that, but I'll have that contract presented for you at the next council meeting.
All right. Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for ordinance number 1168.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 1168.
Second.
Motion approved by Councilmember Cagle and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Ordinance 1168 approved, second and final reading. Move to item B, ordinance number 1172.
An ordinance, the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, setting the compensation of the city judge effective at the term beginning in September 2022 in accordance with Title III Municipal Court, Chapter 1, City Judge Section 3-1034 salary.
This would also be second and final reading. I'll entertain a motion for ordinance number 1172.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 1172. Second.
Motion approved by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I went back and looked under imp task on some city judge surveys that they had done on pricing and everything. And I've got the one here that the city manager gave us, giving us College Dale, Red Bank, and Saudi Daisy. Well, here's one that's done back in January 1, I mean, yeah, January of 2021, going to town of Mount Juliet, and their judge, $10,800, population of 31,000. Union City paying their judge $6,960 with a population of 10,800. McMinnville, Tennessee, paying their judge 112,000 with a population of 13,600. And here is the one that's really got my attention. This one, I think, was done in April of 2021. Let me see. Cleveland, Tennessee. Cleveland, Tennessee, paid $14,814 annually, and their population is 42,300 with 320 employees. So personally, I think we're trying to bump our judges' pay up a little bit more according to this study and this study, and we're right in the middle of this one, so I'd just like to reconsider that amount that we're going to bump him up.
Did those have the number of cases listed? Because I know the volume of our cases is like astronomically went up.
I have to mention one other thing, too. A lot of these have all got benefits, just like ours do. And no, they didn't have the cases, but they did mention... Gallatin, Tennessee, they pay their judge $70,000 annually. They also require him to work 2,080 hours a year, so that's 40 hours a week. So we're wanting to raise our judge to half of that pay right there for working about, I don't know, 10, 12, 14 hours a week. So, and there's other things here I can throw out here, so but those are the main things stuck in my head, and I'm still, I have to just reconsider.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? See none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Councilmember Cagle.
No.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Ordinance 1172 passed, second and final reading. Move to new business, resolution number 3290.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to waive the fee for use of Camp Jordan Arena by the River City Corvette Club for a fundraiser to help benefit the East Ridge Need a Child Fund.
Yes, Mayor. As you know, they are going to do a car show on August 6. They'll be using the PA system, some tables and chairs, and a portion of the proceeds will be donated to the East Ridge Need a Child Fund. With this, we recommend that we do waive the fees for the River City Corvette Club on this. One thing I have mentioned in the past that we will need to start looking at in the future, but not today, is to make sure that we are following state law when it comes, when it comes in relation to donations to organizations. Because if you just give the organization the building, you're not just giving the building. You're still having to spend money for a part-time person to work there that day. You're having to spend money on electricity. You're having to spend money on all these other items. But that's something we're going to look into and not do that right now. But we just want to make sure that however we do handle this in the future, that we are at least following state law on this, and I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for resolution number 3290.
I make a motion to approve resolution 3290.
Second.
A motion approved by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Resolution number 3290 passed. We'll move to item B, resolution number 3291.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager to sign a lease purchase agreement with Axon Enterprise, Inc. for the purchase of 60 TASER, seven conducted electrical weapons.
Assistant Chief.
Yes, this is to replace our aging non-warranty supply of tasers. This should be enough to outfit all of our full-time and reserve officers. It is for, and to break it down, it works out to 53,529 per year, four or five years, expecting a life expectancy of around seven years for the tasers, but once they're paid their hours, so at the end of five years, they do become ours.
This also includes support and other things.
Correct. Every time we use the TASER, every time the cartridge we use, they supply us with the training cartridges. They also supply us with some virtual reality training aids as well.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for resolution 3291.
I make a motion to approve resolution 3291. Okay.
A motion approved by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Hilton. A motion approved by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? See none, roll call Ms. Middleton.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Resolution three-two-nine-one pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to item C, resolution three-two-nine-two.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, awarding annual bids for street department materials for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, mayor. As you know, we, we did the, the bid opening on this July twenty-sixth, and this is a yearly thing that the city does to go ahead and get pricing for materials that the street department needs, such as different types of stone, crush-and-run, riprap, sand, asphalt for patching and things of that nature, concrete, flow fill, some topsoil, and, and those various things. So I gave you all a spreadsheet that showed you the companies on the top, Vulcan, Mid-South Aggregate, Hawasi Paving, Tally, TNT, Park Equipment, Groundscape, and Bradley Tank. Those were the bidders that we had. And on this sheet, you see all the prices that they submitted for the various items within their area of, not expertise, but their area of operations. And so I highlighted the ones that, that had the, the lowest or best bid price to go all the way through this. The only one that is not the lowest that we're still recommending is Tally, which is the, on the sheet asphalt, instead of the ninety-eight dollars a ton, it's at a hundred and four, only because all the other items are with Tally, and it's easier at that point just to be able to stay consistent with the, the one bidder. Their other items, like their surface asphalt's ten dollars a ton cheaper, and the binders, you know, six dollars cheaper. So it still sort of works out when they make their trips, just to be able to go to the, the one place. But besides that, everything else is the lowest bid that's on here.
Thank you, sir. So the recommendation is to accept the highlighted items on the spreadsheet for the bids.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I'd entertain, I'll entertain a motion for resolution three-two-nine-two.
I make a motion to approve resolution three-two-nine-two.
A motion approved by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion?
One question.
Sure.
Uh, no one bid on the tag? Tag code?
No.
No? Okay.
As you see in some, some of these items, only one company bid on those items, too.
We know they use a lot of that tag, so.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? See none, roll call Ms. Middleton.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Resolution three-two-nine-two pass. Move to item D, resolution three-two-nine-three.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager who is designated to purchase information technology equipment and installation services from Lightfoot Technology LLC in order to move the city servers to city hall.
Hello?
Uh, basically, this resolution is to start the, like, basically is to start to lay the groundwork for bringing the servers over from the PD over here in the city hall, includes the purchase of a rack, battery backup, and fiber optic cables, as well as getting Lightfoot to install the equipment, install the cables. Cables also includes them moving, eventually moving the servers over here and getting them configured to be in the building.
Right now, the servers are basically in the attic of the police building, not the coolest place to be in a building.
Yeah, not the safest either.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for resolution three-two-nine-three.
I make a motion to approve resolution three-two-nine-three.
Second.
A motion approved by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion?
One question.
Yes, sir.
I noticed that when I was reading the specs and what he gave us last week, we've got two offsite.
Basically, right now, now, the offsite backups, one is for the emails, there's a device that archives all the emails that are received, as well as sent by any city employee. We have a device onsite that backs them up, and that device is backed up to an offsite location. Then there's a separate device, device that backs up locally all the servers that we have, and it's sent back, and it itself is backed up to a separate site, offsite.
Anything else? Uh, the one question I have is, do we feel we have adequate cooling in the new location we're going with the servers? Okay. I just wanted to ask. All right. Roll call Ms. Middleton.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Resolution three-two-nine-three pass. We'll move to item E, resolution.
Before you go on, mayor, if I could real quick, I just wanted to thank Josh for his work with the city. He's going to be leaving us shortly. He's got a great opportunity he can't pass up. He's leaving on August tenth, correct? Which is conveniently the day before our next council meeting, so he won't have to be here. But I do want to thank him for all his hard work and everything he's done with the city, and I'm working with him and with Lightfoot to help make sure we have a, a good transition.
Yeah, we made some great progress.
So thank you very much for your, your work here.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to resolution number three-two-nine-four.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager or is designated to subscribe to the Motorola Vigilant Database License Plate Reader, LPR, and subscribe sixteen existing in cam, in-car cameras to the LPR, and also lease four fixed cameras and one quick deploy camera for the East Ridge Police Department through the Tennessee Department of General Services statewide contract number four-five-zero pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated twelve dash three dash twelve oh one B.
You follow some of them?
Yes, this is, uh, subscribing us to a database. Uh, this is license plate readers, uh, provides us with four fixed, uh, locations where we can put tag readers up, as well as one, uh, quick deployment where we can move around the city if we develop problem areas. I will stress, these are not red light cameras, they're none of that, these are tag readers. Uh, they are focused on stolen cars, stolen tags, sober alerts, camera alerts, this kind of stuff. Uh, also provides, uh, each one of our cars with a new camera system to provide the LPR, so when a officer pulls the car over, it will automatically read the tag, upload it, and run it through a query, uh, determine whether it's stolen or not. It also with the subscription to the database, it provides our detectives with a rather, uh, robust investigation tool for follow-up some investigations. Oh, and also installation of the cameras and the location of the choose.
Thank you, sir.
Now, these are not ours, but this is a pure lease.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, I'll entertain a motion for resolution three-two-nine-four.
Motion to approve resolution number three-two-nine-four.
Second.
A motion approved by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? See none, roll call Ms. Middleton.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Resolution number three-two-nine-four pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to item F, resolution three-two-nine-five.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, appointing Michael Howell as the city's representative to the management committee of the Hamilton County Water Quality Program, and Christopher J. Dorsey as the alternative representative.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I believe I've received a letter asking for this confirmation. Uh, this is an annual thing, I believe?
Yes.
So, um.
No, it's biannual.
But.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. But, um, I did ask Mr. Howell, and he is more than willing, uh, and then Mr. Dorsey as an alternate, so, um, I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three-two-nine-five.
Make a motion to approve resolution three-two-nine-five.
A motion approved by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? See none, roll call Ms. Middleton.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Resolution number three-two-nine-five pass. All right, we'll move to item G, which is a public hearing for resolution number three-two-nine-six, and we'll also read the resolution.
This will be the public hearing. We're going to read the caption of the resolution of which this public hearing relates to. This is resolution thirty-two ninety-six, a resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to approve a short-term vacation rental certificate application for property located at seven-nine-five and seven-nine-seven Eileen Lane.
Thanks, sir. I'll open up this public hearing for resolution number three-two-nine-six. Is the applicant here? If you'd like to come forward and address the council, not necessary, but if you'd like to, and then anyone else in the audience that would be in favor of or in opposition will have an opportunity to come forward. If you'll state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Heather Hoffler, and I am a resident of the Chattanooga area. I have two daughters, one of whom is with me. She's a student at Tennessee Tech, and she's a political science major and would like to be a lawyer, so I thought this would be a, a nice opportunity for her to have a, kind of a political experience. I am a lawyer. I practiced, I practiced law for about twenty years, and I've become interested in real estate. And so I bought this duplex, which was in need of renovation, uh, with the vision of putting my creative spin on it. I'm very creative, I'm an artist, amateur, and, um, and so I put a lot of my, my time, my energy, my heart, my money into this project. And I'd like to, if I may, hand out some photographs. And I.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I have made three copies, so y'all can share.
Sure.
But I, I do believe these photographs will address a lot of concerns. So I did, I, I did have an opportunity to see the three letters that were in opposition from neighboring, uh, property owners, and I would like to address those concerns. I think it's important. So one of the letters, oh, and in the, in the photographs, first you're going to see my property. Uh, first I put together the, the seven-nine-five duplex, and then it's the seven-nine-seven duplex, and then at the end, the current neighborhood, uh, and, and how my property actually is improving, I believe, uh, the aesthetics and otherwise, this neighborhood. So, um, one of, one of the, um, concerns addressed was, uh, a quote, "Short-term renters do not worry about the outside of the building." Well, the person that worries about the outside of the building is me, um, because I want to appeal to vacationers and vacation, and, and I actually do have, uh, a couple other short-term rentals. I've done this and never had problems. Uh, actually, it's, uh, it's something I, it's like a, a passion of mine. I, I love to host people, I, I think it's fun, but, um, I am the most incentivized to keep the property maintained. Otherwise, I won't get vacationers, I'll get terrible reviews, and no one will, wouldn't come, vacation. So upkeep of the building actually is, is definitely going to be addressed by me, whereas if I get a long-term renter, uh, that becomes much more difficult. When I bought this property, there was already a person in it, and an eviction proceeding had already been started, and they were just staying there. And so I had to continue with the eviction proceeding, and they stayed in this house months while I did the legal process. They didn't pay me any rent, they trashed the house further, they left garbage on the, on the back porch. Um, I'm told by the, the prior owners, they used to park their broken-down cars in the yard. So if you get a long-term tenant in there, it becomes a lot more difficult to get rid of people who are trashing your property. I don't want this property, uh, to be destroyed. Okay, I guess they said parking on the streets, this was expressed in a couple letters. If you can, you can see in these photographs, these driveways are like seventy-five feet long. Um, there is ample parking in these driveways, and I have limited two cars, only two cars, you know, per unit. So there's no way anyone would even want to park on the street. And if you can see in the, the pictures toward the end, there are cars parked on the street and in the yards of this neighborhood. I don't want that, I certainly don't want that in my property. Um, garbage and brush service, well, I mean, I live in the Chattanooga area, I don't want garbage in the yard. I'm going to make sure that the garbage is properly disposed of every Tuesday. Party rental, there will be no parties at this place. Um, first of all, I limit the occupancy, the three-bedroom has a six-person occupancy, the, um, two-bedroom has a four-person occupancy, and if there's any trouble at all, I can just call the police and get them out. Whereas if, if you've got a long-term tenant throwing big parties, I can't just get them out. I mean, it's a real problem, not just for the neighborhood, but for me. Let's see. One person alluded to six families living in a house. Okay, there's not going to be six families living in this house. I mean, it's a vacation rental, and, and I've limited the occupancy. Uh, they, they alluded to, one of the neighbors has a backyard that's a trash pit. No trash pits here. I will impeccably, uh, maintain these properties because I'm incentivized to do so. Someone worried about their safety. Look, I, I'm not trying to invite dangerous people into a neighborhood, people are on vacation, and you could get a long-term renter in there who, who is a drug dealer, right? And who's drug, doing drug transactions. And again, it becomes very difficult to get them out. If there's any type of trouble going on at the house, I'm just going to call the cops and get, get them to leave. So, um, you know, and I, if there's any other concerns, I would really like to address those, but this is, you know, this is something I've done before, it's something I enjoy, and, and I think it's really going to benefit the community, honestly. And then this street's going to, I mean, it already looks better with my house, I think. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
But, you know, we'd like to come forward in favor of or opposition? Please state your name and your address, please.
Bobby Bowling. You want my address?
Yes, please.
Thirty-six point nine Glen Oak Street.
Bobby Bowling?
Bowling.
Bowling?
B-O-W-L-I-N-G. Okay. Uh, I agree, she bought it recently, and she went in there and painted it and fixed it up, and it appears as though someone's already living there now. Um, I don't know, there's two cars on one side, a car and a camper on the other side, but I don't know if that's short-term, long-term visitors, I'm really not sure. But already, the grass needs to be mowed, uh, and I know that's not a big deal. But the other things that she addressed, those are some of my concerns as well. I know you say, you know, no more than four people, six people, and all that kind of stuff, but it's, it's very difficult to manage that. You know, you can rent it to a couple, and they come in there, but then they happen to be having a party that weekend, so they bring all their friends, and. I just, I just really don't like short-term rentals. I know people that have them down off Main Street, which is more of a touristy area, and some of them work out well and some of them don't. But, you know, she says she can get them out of there if it's a problem. But I don't know how, like, if something happens at a night, on a night, Thursday, Friday night, Saturday night, whatever, do you call her or you call the police? I'm sorry. And so because of that, and, you know, the garbage service only picks up once a week, and you're going to have people coming and going all week, so I don't know how that's handled. Because the city's just going to pick it up once, and I don't, is that charged as commercial? Or if you're doing short-term like that, or is it still the same, same fees?
The residential?
But I don't know, what are the benefits for the city?
To have the car.
To, to do short-term rentals? I don't know if anybody's got any ideas about any benefits?
Vacationers pay quite a bit in, uh, hotel, um, taxes, excise taxes. So this, the city is going to benefit, whereas if there's a long-term renter, the city benefits not at all. So they will benefit through taxpayer dollars, as will the state of Tennessee. Vacationers pay both the state and, and the county and the city. I know. I have, I actually have another short-term rental in Chattanooga, um, and lots of taxes paid, never had a party, never had a problem. You know, I live locally, I'm going to be, I'm going to be involved.
But you, you said you don't live in East Ridge, so? Is that correct?
Right now, right now, because everything was put on hold, I am the one living there. Um, but I don't intend to live there forever, and that's why I want to go ahead with the process of. Um, but I don't intend to live there forever, and that's why I want to go ahead with the process of getting the license for both, both properties. But at this point, I, I did. I went ahead and I, I moved in there, um, just because it made more sense for our family for, for this moment. But, but I'm not going to live there forever, you know. I, I don't want to be locked into this. I-
So you normally don't live in East Ridge, or you do live in East Ridge?
I currently do live in East Ridge. It is my residence.
But you don't plan to, you don't plan to live there, so you won't be living in East Ridge?
I may, but I'm not committed to it. Yeah, right now, I do live in East Ridge.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Mr. Bowling, do you own a home on Ali?
Behind, behind that house.
Okay. It's the home you live in behind this house?
Got a picture? I can show you if you got a picture. It adjoins their backyard.
Okay, so the butt, the backyards?
Yeah.
Okay.
If it, you know, if it was front yard, I wouldn't be as worried. I don't like the backyard to be in back there, but.
I, I would encourage you all to look at the picture of what was looking at in his backyard and what he's currently looking at in his backyard. I believe it's on the left.
How many other short-term rentals do we have in East Ridge?
Two. Thank you, sir.
This was actually a short-term vacation rental, three Eileen, which is next door to Heather's house. That was an owner occupied where, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't require to be brought to council. Uh, no different as in Heather living in the, the seven ninety-seven unit, she could actually rent out the seven ninety-five unit as it sits right now and not have council's approval on it at all as a short-term vacation rental, because it's an owner occupied. She's just basically saying, hey, I want, you know, possibly to move out of East Ridge into basically, you know, have that as-
Rent both sides.
Rent both sides as a non-owner occupied, right?
Thanks for the clarification.
Kind of misunderstanding him there. How can she live in one side and be a owner occupied of the other side when she's applying for two different?
Because she did, because she's in the duplex right now, the, the short-term vacation rental ordinance looks at that as an owner occupied. No different than a single-family home if the owner was living upstairs and they had a short-term vacation in the bottom of it, which would have to be zoned correctly in R two district in the duplex, of course, which this is zoned correctly, R two, and it is a duplex. So everything's legal conforming on that one. But being her as the owner, still living in that unit as a duplex, it is considered an owner occupied unit. With her being next door, she could rent out the other side at seven ninety-five. There'll be an owner occupied with no approval for the council.
Thank you, sir.
All right, that's about all I got.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anyone else would like to come forward at this time? Yes, sir. If you'll state your name and address for the record?
Greg Carden. I live at five oh nine South Sweet Bar. I own the house there, five oh nine, or eight oh five Eileen Lane. I was the one that said something about the house between us, and there are about six families living in one house right there, and they're Mexicans. Now, I can't prove that. I've seen them there. And now you're talking about cars, and that's where they come from. But, uh, I don't know, I, I, my question was, how many vacation homes are here in town? You said two. Have you had any trouble with them?
So, I mean, if, if we do have trouble, if you, if you have more than two citations in a twelve-month period, it's brought back to council for a hearing on that. If council finds at that time that they are in violation of that, then the short-term vacation rental service gets pulled. They can no longer apply for a short-term vacation rental, again, within, when a year's period. So at that point, it's just taken away from them, and it's a cease and desist.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Howell, you're saying that it's easier to remedy an issue with a short-term rental versus a long-term lease where somebody's causing chaos and-
Sure. We have a lot of houses in East Ridge, you know, that, there, there's a lot of problem houses. There's, there's a lot of people that cause a lot of problems. So, yeah, when you get, when you try to evict somebody, you're looking at several-month process sometimes, so.
Thank you.
It is good for short-term, what you're saying. But then again, my, my question was, what happens to the parking? Like, you've got a trailer there now, or a camper? Didn't hear one there. Yeah, well, it'd be in a camping place.
Well, I mean, I just got, like, actually, this recent one, um, but I live outside now, so, my home. Um, but, but it may not always-
Yeah. I mean, I have a- I don't know if y'all-
But-
I don't know about trailers.
And there again, in, in the, uh, short-term vacation rental ordinance, you cannot park on any area, any vegetated area. It's already written into the ordinance as well. So, I mean, they, they have to be in the driveway, which hers does accommodate that. She is correct on there. It's about seventy-five feet. So she's limited to, you know, seven ninety-seven being three bedrooms with a potential three cars there and two cars on them, but I think she's limited to two cars for each unit. Is that right? So, I mean, it, I've been inside, and she allowed me to go in it, inspect the home, and I think it was July the eighteenth. I looked at it. It meets all the, uh, the life safety requirements that's, you know, presented in our, our short-term vacation rental ordinance. Uh, at this point, if council approves this, then it goes to the fire marshal for a, a second inspection, then at that point, we can issue it if approved.
All right. Anything else, sir?
That's really all I had to say.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward at this time? I see no one, so I will close this public hearing, and I'll actually then move into resolution number three two nine six.
A resolution of the city council, the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to approve a short-term vacation rental certificate application for property located at seven nine five and seven nine seven Eileen Lane.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we've had the public hearing. We've had some discussion. Uh, anything else? Strile, would you like to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three two nine six.
I make a motion to approve resolution three two nine six.
A motion to approve, uh, Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion?
One question. Do the bedrooms meet square footage?
Yes, sir, they do.
All ten to fourteen's?
Sir.
Anything else? Seeing none, roll call. I'm sorry?
These pictures here showing all these violations. We've got cars parked here and there, and a trailer parked down on, what is it, Gleason? Have, have they been looked at?
I haven't had a chance to look at the pictures there, Mr. Cagle, so I-
Especially this on Gleason.
Yeah, I don't know when the date of those pictures were taken, so that potentially stuff could have been moved or might still be there. When I was there on the eighteenth, I don't remember seeing any of those things.
Anything else, sir? All right. Roll call, Ms. Middleton?
Councilmember Cagle?
Well, I'm against short-term rentals, especially in my neighborhood, so I'm going to have to vote no.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Resolution three two nine six pass.
Mayor and council.
Thank you. We will move to item I, which is discussion of tentative agenda for August eleventh council meeting. Under old business, we have no items. Under new business, we have an unnumbered resolution, uh, bids for spot paving.
I've already discussed.
Yes. Any discussion, council? Seeing none. That's all the items we have in the tentative agenda, but I believe you said we were going to add an additional item for-
Add the item for the, uh, for North Max Smith extension?
Okay.
Council to consider.
All right. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Not on this one.
Okay. Any discussion on that item this time?
You already have the information on that, on North Max Smith?
Pardon?
You already have the information on North Max Smith?
Not all of it yet.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Any other items?
Mayor, we'll add the, um, the access agreement, um-
Oh, yes.
Area. It's, it's simple, very short one, but I'll have that, uh, in final, it's in final form, but we'll have it presentable so that it can be, um, publicly approved with an advance notice to the council.
We'll call it the access agreement for the Slater Road connector. It's, does it have a name?
No, we've kept, called the access area.
Okay.
Yeah. It's an access agreement.
All right, thank you, sir. Anything else, council? See nothing. Appreciate everyone been here tonight. This meeting is adjourned.